Due to the recent changes in the Open Meetings Act, making the following statement that the Governor has issued that the disaster declaration related to public health concerns caused by the statewide COVID-19 pandemic. As for President, I have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the risk of exposure to the COVID-19 virus stemming from an indoor gathering and that the remote meeting is in the best interest of the health, safety and welfare of the Board, Staff and general public. Let me pull up now our agenda. And so review of the agenda, do we have any corrections or additions that anyone would like to suggest?
Do I have to do a roll call? I did last month.
Oh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. I totally remembered, I didn't just read it off this. All right, Jess Ray.
Present.
Terry Lindberg.
Here.
Jim Rogal.
Here.
JD Davis, present. Kaitlyn Trunell.
Here.
Aaron Ripley Guitaric.
Here.
Pam Lewis.
Here.
Thank you so much.
I'll just make note that I'm present on, at the library as required.
Thank you, Brian. And though he's not here, thank you to John for helping with this, making sure that we're managing the Zoom meetings so, and giving it out to the public. Anyone have any review, or excuse me, anyone have any corrections or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, would someone like to move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Move to approve.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will do the roll call vote, JD?
Jess Ray.
I.
Terry Lindberg. Jim Rogal.
Yes.
JD Davis, approved. Kaitlyn Trunell.
Aye.
Aaron Ripley Guitaric.
Aye.
Pam Lewis.
Aye.
The ayes all have it, so moving on to our next item, approval of expenditures, would someone like to move to approve the expenditures?
I'll do so, move to approve payroll in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Move to approve general expenditures in the amount of two hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and seven cents.
Thank you, Terry, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam, do we have any discussion on the expenditures? Hearing none, JD, would you call the vote?
Jess Ray.
Aye.
Terry Lindberg.
Aye.
Jim Rogal.
Aye.
JD Davis.
Aye.
Kaitlyn Trunell.
Aye.
Aaron Ripley Guitaric.
Aye.
Pam Lewis.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all very much, we'll now move into the President's Report. I do have a couple items tonight. One, with all the recent tragedies I think that we've had in the community. So WGLT did a story recently on the library, if you haven't had an opportunity, be sure to check it out. Thanks to the library for its work on the census, that's very important to our community because that helps determine the, the items that come back into the community and our representation, so that's an important, and so helping get the word out to the census. And I would again point out, because Kaitlyn mentioned this earlier, she's actually sporting her census t-shirt tonight, so thank you, Kaitlyn. Also, kudos goes to the library staff for working on getting out the word about voting and the importance to be civically engaged and helping people learn how to do that in our community, so kudos to them. And then recently, I had an opportunity to sit in on some board training for a different board. And I came across a few things I thought I would share that was shared in the training I was in. It's from the book Boards That Make A Difference, and these are some of the things that help make for a good board. And I thought it would be appropriate maybe just to help us remind ourselves of these things as we move forward. A board is doing a good job when it has cleared and shared expectations. A board's job is to create the vision, setting out where we are heading. It sets the goals, it monitors performance and takes action. It needs to be accountable to itself and the community. It creates the future rather than just reviewing the past, which is very difficult for a history major to say, but that is important. Not so much the reviewing the past, focusing on the big picture is important, we should not micromanage. And we should really speak with one voice when a decision has been made. So I thought those are all very good points, and I know that those are some items that we need to consider as we move forward doing our businesses aboard. And I thought it would be nice just to reshare that with other folks, because I thought it was a good reminder. So therein ends my report. Let's see here, we don't have public comment tonight, if I remember correctly, right, Brian? We don't have any on schedule. So we will now move right into the library director's report, Brian, what do you have to share with us today?
I just want to point out, I appreciate all that you said there, Jess. In terms of the census work, Laura Goloshevsky's done a lot of work for us there, so just want to acknowledge her of all of her work there. And then the, we've had a lot of staff involved in getting the word out, the importance of voting, so I appreciate all that work there. Let's see, we're going to talk about reopening, long story short, looking good, I don't want to jinx this, but we're seeing paint and trim and, you know, things of that nature as of today, so that's good, we're getting very, very close. We have some flooring in, we're missing small things here and there, as is always the case, but getting very close with the restroom project, so that feels great. One thing I've been encouraging, at least our leadership team, is, you know, we really, we want to tell the public that we want to be open, so we look forward to serving them and having them in the facility, so we really want to get that message out. So it feels good to be able to get, get closer, and hopefully in the next week or so, we can open our doors, we hope, so. We did have our electrical inspection for the above ceiling today, and as far as I know, that went well, so we're getting to that point too. We're getting again very, very close, that feels good. Let's see, the audit, as I mentioned in an email before, audits were completed, we're in good shape there. The budget process, we'll talk about the budget tonight, have a number of notes to share there, it's entered. You know, frankly, we're in better shape now than I think anyone thought we would be, you know, when this pandemic started, so there's some relief there certainly. The foundation hired its development coordinator, a part-time position, fully funded by the foundation, so that's been great. Joel McReynolds is his name, he and I met for about an hour and a half today, we've meeting at least once a week. And it feels fantastic to have someone focused on that work, I think it's really the only way that that organization will move forward. And I've asked Joel to really focus on, you know, creating revenue for the foundation, and we're working on all the other nuts and bolts things, obviously too, but really hoping to move forward. I think you'll see a lot in the, in the future in terms of monthly giving, planned giving as well, but I think monthly giving is really a very accessible, meaningful opportunity that a lot of our supporters will, will enjoy. So more on that, I'd also like to offer, if you'd like to meet Joel, you know, if you want to talk to him over the phone or however you'd like to, to interact with him, if you'd like to do so, please let me know, and I can help arrange that. Joel is obviously, you know, learning about all of our relationships and our library supporters and trying to kind of put that entire puzzle together, and there's a lot of pieces there, but I'm certain that he would love to speak with you if you'd like to talk to him for, you know, five, 10, 15 minutes, that might be helpful to him, so please consider that. I mentioned this before, but used book sale, you know, we're not going to have a book, large book sale in the near term, but we are planning to have a little bit of an expanded ongoing sale once we open, so hoping to, you know, get those books out in the community, get them sold, help the foundation, we also know that people miss the book sale, as do we, and so we're going to offer that to the extent that we can, in a safe way, so look forward to that. Our sensory app is on the App Store, we've heard really good things about it, so again, that's made possible through Giving Tuesday 2019. John and Jennifer, Emily all did a lot of work on that, I think Laura and Tori too, so a great staff effort there. And thanks to the community for funding that, it's a great, great offering for us. Believe it or not, it's time for the next per capita grant work, so that will be coming up, the application's not out at the moment, we anticipate it'll be out early October, early to mid, so likely we'll be doing some work on that either the October or the November board meeting, so we can satisfy the, the board's requirements for that application, so. And unless there are any questions, that's it.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions?
Terry has one.
Hey, hey.
Sorry, Terry.
How do we get a hold of Joel McReynolds?
Well, I can, I can send you all his contact info, the easiest way to do it, I'll do that, all right, thanks.
Um, Brian, was there any public announcement made that that app was in the App Store now?
I believe that was on social media, I'd have to check. I'm not certain, I would be surprised if there wasn't, you know, we have our typical process. If you haven't seen it, then what I'll do is make sure it gets promoted again.
Yeah, I didn't see it, and I'm on social media too much, so I was just curious.
All right, thank you.
Thank, thank you for that self-disclosure. So we'll move now into, next item on the agenda is Foundation Report, do we have anything that we'd like to share from the foundation?
Pam, do you have anything to say?
Well, no, obviously Joel's the biggest news.
Yeah, Foundation had their annual meeting recently, this month, earlier this month, and Lynn Potts is the President now, and Mark Tucci's the Vice President, Nancy Anderson continues as Secretary, Derek Gibb as Treasurer. Joan Steinberg resigned from the Foundation Board, and I just want to mention that's, it's a really strong board, they do good work, and they're very excited to have Joel, you know, there helping the foundation move forward, so. Yeah, it's, it feels great to, we've certainly taken a step forward, I think, and like the entire foundation kind of fills that momentum, which has been good.
Next on the agenda is new business, and it's a discussion item on our COVID-19 reopening update, Brian did mention a little bit of that, so I'd like to talk a little bit about that.
So we are, we're being very careful not to put a date out there that we're not certain of. So we anticipate that when we do announce we're going to reopen, it will likely be not a lot of lead time, probably. We've been kind of warming up to it, I think, in a number of ways. I just want to talk about a few of our parameters for anyone who might be watching. You know, what we are abiding by is the DCEO retail guidelines, I did ask the, the McLean County Health Department to review our reopening plan, unfortunately, they're not able to offer that at this time, they're very busy, obviously, with many, very important things. But they did refer us to the DCEO retail guidelines, which was what we had been planning with anyway, so that was good. What we're asking are our general parameters, you know, for our patrons or our staff, if sick, please don't enter the library, we want to keep everyone, patrons and staff, healthy as possible. We do offer curbside obviously as an alternative, and, you know, we look forward to that really continuing in a, in a more robust way than it did in the past, so. We'll have a staff ambassador stationed between the two entries in the main floor, between the stairs and the elevator on the second floor, to answer any questions, make sure everyone's wearing a mask, offer hand sanitizer, et cetera. We'll, we'll keep an eye on our door counts as well at those stations, and all staff will take turns there, so. We, again, we really look forward to just engaging with our users, welcoming them, telling them that we miss them, saying hi, so we're excited about that. We will have some masks there too, at that station, if anyone needs a mask, we'll, we'll offer them a mask to keep and to use. We do require that masks be properly fitting and properly worn, again, just for everyone's safety. Social distancing is required as much as possible, a sixty-minute time limit per visit is what we're discussing. Now, none of this is final, but this is what we're thinking at the moment. You know, I've heard some encouragement for a thirty-minute visit, some libraries are doing that. In terms of the general landscape, some libraries are, are still closed. Now again, we've had this restroom project, you know, which is resulted in us being closed, but some are choosing to stay closed just because of the COVID risks in their communities. We, we chose the sixty-minute time limit per visit, we know that the community has missed coming in the library. We know that sixty minutes goes quickly in a library, particularly given it's been here for many months. Also, we wanted to match Bloomington on, on as many of these parameters as possible, and they're at sixty minutes currently. But I think it's important to mention that, you know, we're, we're proposing these parameters, given the way the situation is right now, with the information that we have right now, so we're certainly open to revising these if necessary for the safety of the community. At the moment, there's no seating in many places, there's no toys, there's no discovery room, which is really unfortunate and sad, but it's the right thing to do in terms of safety right now, so we're, we're sorry to, to those who, who can't find what they want at the library or who, you know, the experience has changed for some. So one reminder I should point out there that we're branding this as our grab and go service, so this is not the pre-COVID library that we can offer right now, but this is at least getting the patrons in the door, allowing them to browse, get their holds, see new items, things like that, but it really is, the intent is, please come in in a safe way, if you're healthy, find your items and then, and then go. And we think that that emphasis will help keep patrons and staff as safe as possible. We also think, you know, we anticipate attendance will be probably lower than we saw in the past, and, and a lot of patrons probably won't come near that sixty-minute time limit, we think, so again, we'll, we'll keep our eye on all this, but we think this is where we want to start. In the adult area, we have very limited seating, so we have some computer use, we have one computer per table, where there used to be four. We have several tables near outlets, so that if someone brings in their own laptop, they can use it, they can still print, scan, fax, et cetera. There's also chairs kind of in the general perimeter of, and some down the center of the adult area, if someone just needs to sit for a bit. But seating is certainly very limited, you know, in the adult area. Let's see, hand sanitizer, use of hand sanitizer, we will strongly encourage as patrons come in, when they're in the library, before they leave the library, before and after they touch items, so we're really trying to help patrons keep their hands clean as much as possible for the sake of everyone, and we have many, many hand sanitizing stations throughout. Our, we have several new custodians, we've hired two new custodians, we have a third one in process. And each of those is up to eighteen hours per week, so that gives us a total of six part-time custodians. Under normal circumstances, we're open sixty-eight hours per week, so we've made this change to all part-time custodians. We've built in a lot of safety in terms of, we know staff will want to take time off, they might get sick, they might have family get sick. We'll kind of overlap coverage at times, particularly as we're in this training phase. Really good news there, honestly, you know, it's difficult to hire custodians right now, everyone's looking for them and especially to hire really good ones, so we had a fantastic result of our search, and really, really good results. And the trick is trying to make all the availability come together in a way that we can cover the hours that we want to, so we had really, really good results there, so I'm really excited about our new custodial staff. We're encouraging self-service as much as possible, so we will encourage patrons to use self-checks. We'll have materials, cleaning products available to wipe the self-checks to. Staff are there to help when necessary and happy to help, we're just trying to, again, limit interaction between staff and public where we can. And we have acrylic dividers in place at the service desks and some other places throughout. Again, happy to help, just another measure that we could take to help keep staff and patrons safe. We continue to quarantine items coming back for seven days, that is a challenge frankly, physically. There's a lot of discussion in the library world about the necessity to do this, because you've probably heard of the REOM study, which is through IMLS and Batel Labs, and there's questions about how much virus they've used, so the, the general consensus is they've used a lot of virus and they still detect it after, you know, so many days. But libraries quarantining items for seven days, some would say that's excessive, it's what our Rails is our larger, kind of our top half of the state, our organization that we're in. We have to quarantine items before they go in the delivery system too, so there's another quarantine on the front end. So quarantining takes a lot of space, a lot of, you know, staff time and energy. We want to do it to keep everyone as safe as possible, but just FYI, there is a lot of discussion at the moment about that quarantine, that duration, that seven-day time. All programming remains virtual through at least the end of 2020. We, we're talking about our hours, we're considering limiting those in a bit, not a lot. What we're really looking at right now particularly is that eight to nine o'clock hour at night, Monday through Thursday. You know, we could try, take that hour and maybe do some additional cleaning or work on holds. So one, one thing that we're talking about in terms of workflow is when we're, when we typically have staff out and about in the stacks, whether they're pulling whole items or re-shelving items, you know, just trying to be aware of that interaction with staff, and we have staff moving around and the public, you know, the patrons are there too, so trying to structure around that as much as possible to. Again, you know, we'll know a lot more if we reopen and see how much traffic is there in the facility and is that an issue or not, but we're just trying to prepare for everything we can. Let's see, I think that's, in general, that's it, you know, there's, there's a lot of anxiety for, for some staff, you know, that's, we, we've seen that too as we prepared for curbside, as we prepared for staff coming back in the building. So we're trying to acknowledge that obviously and work through that, what we can, that's best for the staff. And then we also have staff who are, you know, ready to go and have been for a while, so we have the full spectrum, you know, here in our staff, so. All in all, I think that staff are, are, are ready, doing a great job, we feel that we have the facility well-prepared, we have good cleaning protocols, good equipment, plenty of custodians, et cetera. And, you know, more than anything, we just want our, our patrons to know that, you know, we're sorry we've been closed this long, it certainly wasn't part of the plan, but we really look forward to seeing them here again, and ask them to help us keep everyone safe.
For the staff? Yeah, sorry, I just launched into it, for the staff concern, are they centered around anything, are they all over the board? Like what, what kinds of things are they worried about, what are they thinking about?
I, I think it's a general, well, I shouldn't generalize it, but so things that I've heard is like, you know, sitting at the ambassador desk, for example, what if someone doesn't want to wear a mask, that's been a concern. You know, what about items that, that patrons pull out and look through and then they, they put back in the shelves, you know, what can we do about that? So we've talked about, for the mask issue, you know, handle that as we would any other behavioral issue in the past, and we, we, you know, do that regularly, so that's the plan, is to attempt to, to help that person understand and not, you know, get a manager, and we'll help that person. We want, as we always have, we want people to use the library, they just have to follow the few simple rules. But this time we have these additional requirements in place, you know, wearing the mask properly while they're here, so. And then in terms of like the materials, for example, you know, that's similar to lots of other environments where someone can touch an item and it's not getting wiped or quarantined before the next person comes along and, and touches it on their own, so. We can't guarantee that, you know, everything is virus-free, but what we're trying to do is take every step that we can to make the environment as good as it can be. We will have carts out for patrons, if they select items that they don't want, to set those items on, and then we can address those as they come. But I think those are probably the two main concerns, just patrons touching things and then also the, the mask concern.
Other question for Brian. Brian, I know you've been tracking Bloomington since they were open before we are, and we often try to mirror as much as possible between the two libraries for the convenience of the, the users. Is there any big takeaway that Bloomington shared that they were surprised by that helped us plan?
Yeah, we've been in conversation with Bloomington in a number of ways, and I think the, one thing that they changed right away was they had patrons coming in who wanted to use their own computer, so they, they've been, maybe fit some places, you know, a few tables with power so that you can bring your own computer in and do computing, so we're planning for that right off the bat. I think the other key measure there that we've heard from other libraries too is just low, low traffic, you know. Now our building is shaped differently than Bloomington, you know, we're a little kind of longer and narrower, narrower, whereas Bloomington's kind of more spread out. So we'll see, you know, how that goes, but what we, we think that we'll see, not a lot of visitors. And again, you know, that with the grab and go emphasis, hopefully, we, we want to see, you know, patrons in the building, we just ask that they, they protect themselves and protect other staff, take every action they can, clean their hands before, during and after, and then once they're done, you know, go ahead and, and go enjoy the materials that they've selected. Yeah, but I think those are the two keys takeaways that we, we learned from Bloomington.
And thanks to Bloomington for, for teaching us what they've learned.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Okay, any other questions or concerns to share with Brian? Okay, we'll move from that discussion item to our action item, which is the budget. What have we learned?
I could talk about this for a long time, I'll try not to. So, you know, long story short, when we, when we ended our last fiscal year, March 31st, we, we knew a lot less about this fiscal year than certainly, so we took some actions to just ensure that we would be in a good, good place financially right now. And so we transferred forward a lot of the savings that we had, you know, in the fiscal year 2020 budget, which ended March 31st. So we moved those lines from expense line to expense line, so then that takes, it, it's kind of an artificial, it looks like 2020 was quite a bit lower than 2021, because the expense in 2020 went down a lot and 2021 went up a lot. So basically, I moved money from different budget lines to, to budget lines that I thought could be impacted by COVID. And at the same time, we weren't sure what would happen with property tax revenue, if we would still see as much property tax revenue come in, we thought we would, we budgeted at the time for a five percent reduction, we've been okay so far. So I guess the good news is the, the revenues came in as we expected thus far. And then the, the money that we brought forward from 2020 to 2021, I think a lot of that, we, we won't need this fiscal year. And that's really important, all that in total was about a little over three hundred thousand dollars that we moved forward. That, that made me feel much better in terms of potentially getting through, you know, say we had a, a significant dip in property tax revenue, well, this would help us then get through that and, and be fine for 2021. And I was really looking particularly at how do we get through this fiscal year when we were ending last fiscal year? So we're in a good position, and I mentioned that, that significant transfer, because at the moment, our, our revenue is less than our expenses, we have a, we have a healthy fund balance in our operating fund, but a lot of this money that we carried forward will address those deficits as we move forward. Some other things I'd like to mention related to the budget. We have, in terms of staffing, we've let our staffing become very lean over the We have, in terms of staffing, we've let our staffing become very lean over the pandemic. So I think we hired, until we got to these custodians recently, I think we hired one person between when we closed and, and now. So we had, there's two full-time positions that are vacant. There's a, a number of part-time positions in children's and adult services and circulation. So, uh, that was intentional. You know, we wanted to kind of draw down there, uh, and, and wait until we were near opening and then ramp back up, uh, and then prioritize, obviously. So part of that was, again, we weren't sure the impact of potentially lower revenues or increased expenses related to COVID. So, again, we're in a, we're in a good position there. Talking about staffing, I said it earlier, but I'll just remind, you know, you all, anyone out there, that we do have a part-time, uh, development coordinator for the foundation. It's important to note that that position is fully funded by the foundation. The library does not pay for that position in any way. So that's just a, a good distinction to know. Also, kind of, you know, budget-related, we've done a lot of facility projects during the shutdown, not just bathrooms. We've done a lot of projects here and there that would have been disruptive otherwise. We'll still have some of those happening even after we reopen. Um, but that's, you know, those cost money, obviously, but we're fine. We've, we've just taken advantage of, of being closed so that we can avoid the disruption. It's safer for everyone. So we've really made some headway on, on some, uh, facilities projects. Just budget-related, uh, some grant opportunities came up recently. Uh, the applications were actually due today. Uh, I sent one in for a PPE reimbursement of $500. Uh, I sent one in for a $10,000 digital network access. We plan to use that to, uh, upgrade and enhance our wifi. So we want to get better wifi throughout the building. We wouldn't mind getting it out in the parking lot a little bit if possible. Uh, that, we have some challenges there, but we think there's some potential solutions too. So we have high hopes for those two grants. We applied for a third, which is called the Back to Books Grant. That's a $4,900 grant and that's, um, we plan to use that. You know, we've, we've really come back to a focus on print. We went through this kind of roller coaster with a focus on digital uh, earlier in the pandemic and saw that use spike. Um, looking at Unit Five specifically right now and what their media specialists are doing and their ability to order print materials. We see our role definitely in terms of how we can help Unit Five students and all students in the community grow a, a robust physical item collection because it's not really being done anywhere else. And, uh, that's something that we do really well. And, uh, we hope to get this $4,900 to help us further grow that collection. Uh, but we think that that's a really good use of that money, just more print books particularly for, uh, students in the community. So. So hopefully we'll get all three of those grants and that's, uh, a little over $15,000. So appreciate those opportunities. Uh, but in general, um, you know, I think the budget's in, you know, I was nervous, obviously, when we went into the pandemic. Not sure how some of these variables would turn out. Uh, I think we made some, um, good moves in terms of moving forward some funding and then taking down our, our revenue projections. Keep in mind too, I think we shouldn't lose sight that we eliminated fines and DVD fees and that's, you know, it's, um, you're talking thousands of dollars there and we overcame that and, uh, I think we're in good shape. And certainly it feels great to, to, uh, to not have those as revenues, which is probably a silly thing to say during, uh, budget time. But, uh, it feels really good to be able to offer that to our community and still come away with a healthy budget that, that allows us to operate well and serve the community well.
Were the computer, uh, budget-related somewhat, were the computers ordered or received or?
Received.
They're here.
Yep.
Good.
Yes.
Any other questions about budget? Terry.
Looks like, uh, public access software is down quite a bit. Is that planned?
For which year? For the next year?
Yeah, it looks like, am I reading right? It was two, almost 219 and it's going down to about 146.
Yeah, so public access software, so this has been, as we were ending last year and Hoopla was, was shooting up. I took about $80,000 from budget, uh, other lines last year and put it in public access software because we weren't sure how long it would be until we could circulate print items again. So that was, uh, that was actually our largest transfer was to do anything we could to keep content circulate or, you know, in the hands, uh, digitally, uh, in our patrons' hands. So that, that's one of those examples of a false, uh, difference.
And al- also, when, when you said you had let some positions remain vacant, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, it, it looks like you didn't cut any positions. You funded them for the future year.
Right. So, uh, our part-time, we took down our part-time, uh, budget in a way that we had three benefited positions in the budget for the last couple of years, which we never filled for a number of reasons. And then we made this change to going to additional, uh, custodial positions. Like I said, we're at six right now. We still have, uh, what I think is a, a, a healthy, well-funded, part-time line there that will allow us to serve the community well. Uh, but yeah, right now, we haven't, we haven't eliminated any positions, even the full-time positions, um, that were filled. We did take out those, those unfilled, uh, benefited part-time positions. And also just a reminder too, uh, this budget does include all of the required increases, uh, to, to the $15 minimum wage.
Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, I'll hop in with one of mine then. Uh, so I noticed that we did reduce travel and training inside the budget, um, based on, on the fact that a lot of things are online and that's a lot of conferences, a lot of, that there may be less. Is there any plan of what you might move that to closer to the end of the year if we, uh, don't have those expenditures?
Yeah, uh, just a reminder, our travel and training bumps typically every other year because the PLA conference is every other year. That's the main conference for, um, public library staff. So, um, I've thought a lot about travel and training and I, uh, several of us did a, a training day on crisis communications, talking about short-term crisis versus a long-term crisis like COVID, for example. And, um, so we had a, a group of us attend to that and it was, uh, like $129. Uh, it was, it was a good, good conference. And, or it was a webinar basically, but, um, yeah, we, travel and training, it's going to be interesting to see what that is in the future, I think. And, uh, I certainly think that it's going to be a long time before we have staff going to, you know, events, other places. Uh, what I hope to do is, uh, keep that, that learning culture going. And perhaps that's not just, uh, you know, Zoom or, or what we're doing right now, but maybe bringing in, uh, you know, bringing the training to us more, you know, staff-wide stuff. We split and half-go it in the first few hours and the other half go for the next couple or so. Uh, but my focus moving forward is bringing training to our staff more so than our staff going to training. And, uh, maybe sharing that. In the past, we've shared that like with Bloomington, for example. We'll, we'll go in and co-chair on things like that. I also think about there's, you know, more of a need than ever for, um, training related to wellness, for example. And, you know, the, what this time that we're in right now, I think we look at, uh, some different training that we can offer staff that will benefit them. So, uh, that's where I am right now with training.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we've got plans to continue professional development because I think that's important. And, and the amount of service that we'll be able to provide the community.
Yeah.
If at the end, if we don't find that we're using that, are you going to look towards the end? And then I know you talked about building the physical collection. Is, is the idea to put that towards physical collection? If there's still some leftover and moving it between lines, or would that be a rollover into the, the emergency fund?
Uh, if we did not.
This is real early to ask this question too.
No, that's a good question. So, so once we created the, the 223, the special reserve fund, by definition, anything left in the operating fund goes to the special reserve fund. Which is another reason I made those moves late last fiscal year because I wanted that money to be available for the operation of the library if necessary. And, uh, worst case scenario, it either helps us in the budget in the future or it goes to the special reserve fund. So if we did nothing and it was unused, uh, or, you know, whatever remains of it would go to the, the special reserve fund. Um, but several times between now and then, I'll look at where are the other lines? What are our other needs? Uh, you know, what about digital content, for example? If, do we go through another, uh, time when digital content, uh, use increases, for example, and we move some money there? Yeah, again, I'm just, it feels great to have that money there for staff development, as you said, which we appreciate a lot as a staff. And that's, that's one of our, it's part of our culture, certainly to continue learning. And it's part of our, uh, discussion when we're recruiting for staff, that we are a learning culture. We continue professional development. So having it there, uh, feels very healthy and, and right as an organization. So we appreciate that. But it's certainly possible, particularly this year, some of that money will be left over and we'll, we'll make the best use of it. Um, but the worst case scenario is it goes into the special reserve fund.
Anything else? Okay, I believe that this is an action item, so we need to take action on approving the budget as presented. Uh, would someone like to so move? Jim?
Do I, do I need to say, uh, the budget numbers or just, uh, I'm, make a motion to approve the budget as presented?
And, and since the, the numbers are already in the packet, JD has that, so I think it would be fine. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Any further discussion on this? And JD, if you would be so kind as to call the vote?
Jess Ray.
Uh, aye.
Terry Lindberg.
Aye.
Jim Rogal.
Aye.
JD Davis, aye. Caitlin Trunell.
Aye.
Erin Ripley Gitarik.
Aye.
Jan Lewis.
Aye.
And I'd like to thank all the pirates there. Aye. So budget, uh, has been approved and moving on, our next item on the agenda is strategic planning and that is a discussion item. Um, and I will say, um, it certainly is a little harder in, in this current environment to, to, uh, do some of the things that we were hoping to do with strategic planning. Uh, Brian, have you got anything you'd like to share about strategic planning?
Yes, uh, I completely agree with what you just said, Jess. Um, it is, it feels very odd to be talking about how do we best serve our public when we're closed, frankly. So, uh, we look forward to being open again, being able to engage our patrons. Um, we have kind of intentionally put this off as we've gotten through all these other things, getting ready to reopen, you know, finishing our, our physical changes, budget, et cetera. So my hope is that, uh, actually, uh, we have a management meeting tomorrow, get back into this. And, uh, with reopening on the, on the horizon, we want to, uh, determine how do we best engage our users? And, uh, it's a tricky time, I think, but I think it's a good time too because it's, you know, we've broken a lot of habits and people will use the library a different way. We have this, this new perspective of using it only from, from home or remotely uh, or, or be a curbside in conjunction with that too. So, uh, you know, outreach, how does outreach fit in? Uh, in the, you know, given how some parameters have changed. So, um, we're excited. I think it's going to be a very interesting time. Now that we've had this, uh, this time where we haven't been able to really engage, I think we'll kind of, uh, we'll have more, more planning activity in, in less time. But I still think we're fine in terms of timeline. We want to get this done by the end of, uh, 2020. And, um, I think I've asked this group before, but you know, please let me know any ideas you have for how do we best engage the community? We can survey them, obviously. We can, you know, meet via Zoom. Um, rather than a large community stakeholder meeting, we're probably looking more so at focus groups, uh, this time around. Uh, we did something similar back in 2008 when we were going through some, some facility planning. But it's how do we get the engagement in a safe way, I think, is, is the trick right now. Um, and, uh, definitely a survey will be part of that, but if you, if you have thoughts in terms of engaging, you know, more personally, more, more one-on-one or in small groups, please let me know. It's, we're excited. Uh, you know, last time we did this, we didn't have a community engagement manager and that's by design given us a lot of really strong sustained relationships. And I think that will make this planning process, uh, more successful, honestly. And, uh, and so we're, we're excited to move through it, but it is admittedly, it's, it's different. You know, it, it is a challenge to do this right now, but it also, I think that we're going to benefit from it in terms of being ready for uh, operating in different ways in the future. And, uh, I, I think that we're going to have a good result. I've, I've already said to staff that I think last time, you know, we, we really focused on zeroing in on a few things, making a very, a very concise plan. I think now, as a result of doing well at some of those things, I think we can expand the plan a bit. And I think despite a necessity, um, particularly factoring in how we were operating in different ways than we used to, in addition to the ways that we used to, uh, I think the plan will grow. We would probably see more, more goals and, uh, that's okay, I think, because we're at that point. Whereas last time we needed to focus in a little bit and kind of rein things in. So, uh, I think we're going to have a good outcome. And, uh, look forward to, in suggestions the board has and also to your input as we move forward.
Any comments for Brian? I would say that given that we are now at the end of National Preparedness Month, that, uh, and the fact that we have dealt with an emergency situation for so long as part of our strategic plan, that we should probably make sure that we include ongoing, uh, how we react to, uh, different situations going forward. Channeling our emergency preparedness month moment here through that. So, not that we don't do a good job, but if anything, that this has taught us is the, the need to be able to be nimble and to react and having some things on hand already and being prepared makes a difference. Especially when we see when there's shortages and things like that. So that would be my two cents while we're talking about it. Anyone else have any recommendations? Hearing none. Um, let's see, what less? We are now moving into any unfinished business, which I do not believe that we have. Does anyone have any unfinished business? Uh, hearing none, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, does anyone have any suggested, uh, items for our next business meeting?
If you're open, are we going to be at the library?
Thank you for asking, JD.
I hope so. That would be great.
Yes, if, if we're able to open, I think it would be appropriate. Um, Brian and I did briefly talk about that before about making sure that, uh, we had an appropriate space to be able to do so. And, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll be able to do that.
It, it would be half the community room is the space that we would.
Um, anything else for items for the next agenda? And with that in mind, our next meeting date is October 28th. How did October become so quickly getting here? I don't know. Uh, but yet it is. And, and I don't know if I can speak for all of us. I will just speak for myself on this. It seems like this has been a very quick year and a very slow year, all at the same time. My goodness. And then I will say, um, one, uh, I should have said this in, in my president's report too, in, in the spirit of natural preparedness. But I hope we all have had our flu shots. I know I have had mine. So if you can't get a flu shot, be sure to get your flu shot. Don't forget to get out and vote and, uh, make sure you turn your census in because if I remember correctly, if you have it, you still have a little bit of time to get your census in. I'm sure everybody in this group has already done their, their census, but make sure you're friends and neighbors. So, and don't forget, the, the year's the big duty. So with that, it was great seeing everyone. Thank you so much for your time and your efforts. Uh, Brian, our thanks to the staff and all that they do every day. Uh, thanks to everyone in the board for the work they do. And I believe that we can now say we are adjourned.